Troy, thank you for that. Welcome, everyone, for our September 28, 2021 Woodmore Mountain General Improvement District Public Hearing, which we will do fairly briefly here before our land use meeting. So I'm going to go ahead and call it to order, and if we'll all stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Attorney Ingles, do we have a certification of the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Notice was proper for this item under CRS 30-20-511. It was posted within three places within the bounties of the district on September 13, and it was also published at the courthouse on September 9. Given that, you have notice and jurisdiction to proceed.
Thank you, Attorney Ingles. Are there any commissioners with disclosures for items on this agenda?
I have none, thank you.
No, sir.
And I have none either. With that, we will move to Item 2, which is the consent agenda. Is there any public comment on the consent agenda for Item 2A, which is the Woodmore Mountain General Improvement District Public Hearing Approval of Minutes? And then we have Item 2B, which is the approval of vouchers through Andrew Copeland. Any public comment on that? Troy, do we have any public comment online?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no online comment.
Okay, thank you. With that, I'll close public comment and bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or motion.
Mr. Chai, I have a motion to approve the request in Items A and B of the consent agenda.
A and second.
Okay, there's a first and second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion passes 3 to 0. With that, we will adjourn the Woodmore Mountain General Improvement District. And we will open and call to order the Board of County Commissioners' Land Use and Public Hearing Meeting for Tuesday, September 28, 2021. We've done the Pledge of Allegiance, so I will ask Attorney Ingles to certify the agenda. Mr. Ingles?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Items 2A and B did not require any specialized notice, but they were properly noticed under the open meetings laws. Item 3 did not require any specialized notice, but it was required that you had previously held a public hearing that was held on August 24, and this was noticed for today. You have notice and proper jurisdiction on all three items on your agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Ingles. Are there any commissioners with any disclosures for items on this agenda?
I have none, thank you.
No, sir.
And I have none either. And with that, we'll move to Item 2A, which is Legacy Pines East, filing 2, final plat, project file SB 2021-023. Eric Pavlenek presenting for staff. Hi, Eric.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Eric Pavlenek representing Planning Services. The project before you is Legacy Pines East, filing 2, final plat. The project number is SB 2021-023. Legacy Pines LLC is the owner of the property, and Nick Hyer with Hyer &amp; Company is the applicant representative. The request is for approval of a final plat consisting of 11 single-family residential lots, four tracks, and associated public rights away on approximately 101 acres within the large rural residential zone district. This completes a plating of Legacy Pines East subdivision. The entire project was approved with a 20% or five-lot density bonus based on the preservation of 50% of the site as permanent open space. The intent of the final plat process is to provide for the review of the final engineering plans, the subdivision improvements agreement, public dedications, and other legal agreements, as noted on this slide. The final plat process begins with the submittal of an application, following a review period by referral agencies and the public, a final acceptance of all engineering plans. The request is considered by the board at a public meeting. No public comment was received from abutting property owners or members of the public. Comments were received from the Burning Tree Ranch HOA focusing on lot size, the road connection, and construction traffic. The property outlined in blue is located approximately 1.8 miles east of the intersection of North State Highway 83 and Lost Lake Drive. This is an aerial view of the property and surrounding developments. The site was rezoned from A1 to LRR in 2007. The Legacy Pines East sketch plan was approved in 2010 for 29 lots with a 20% density bonus. The applicant submitted a combined preliminary and final plat application in 2017, but it was withdrawn by the applicant prior to the board hearing. The applicant was required to submit a preliminary plan application as the new first step in subdivision process in 2019. In February of 2019, the board reviewed and approved a preliminary plan for 29 single-family lots, which included a 20% density bonus for the preservation of 50% of the site as open space. The density bonus regulations were removed from the Douglas County zoning resolution by board action in September of that same year. Density bonus projects that were in process at the time of the rec change were allowed to proceed under the former density bonus regulations. The first final plat for Legacy Pines East was approved in September of 2019, and this is the second and final phase of development within the subdivision. The application proposes 11 single-family lots and four tracks on 101 acres. The lots range of size from 3.01 acres to 4.57. They are generally clustered with open space tracks and no-build zones established to preserve significant stand of vegetation, steep slopes, and view corridors. The road network serving the entire subdivision was approved and constructed with filing 1. This is a view from the recently constructed secondary access road Burning Ridge Drive looking north. This is a view from the intersection of Lost Lake Drive and Burning Ridge Drive looking Another view from the same location looking northeast. And finally, a view looking east. Here are the approval standards for a final plat that are discussed in detail in the staff report. The subdivision improvements agreement and all engineering reports, studies, and plans for the final plat have been approved. The proposed density bonus also includes approval standards per Section 409 of the zoning resolution. Reference to the approval standard are discussed in detail in the staff report. Again, the density bonus has been removed from the zoning resolution but are applicable to this application, and it was submitted prior to removal of the regulations. Staff has evaluated the final plat request in accordance with Article 5 of the subdivision resolution. Should the board find that approval standards for the final plat are met, the following proposed conditions should be considered for inclusion in the motion. Condition number 1: Prior to issuance of the first residential building permit within filing 2, the prescribed mitigation identified in the approved wildfire mitigation plan shall be implemented. Condition number 2: Prior to recordation of the final plat, the applicant shall pay $18,764 for cash in lieu of school land dedication to this Douglas County School District. Condition number 3: During construction activity within the development, the applicant, its successor, and its assigned shall take all reasonable care to watch for historic resources, paleontological resources, and other cultural history resources, and shall immediately notify Douglas County in the event of such discovery. Condition number 4: Colorado Parks and Wildlife literature shall be made available to both prospective homeowners and homebuyers regarding the existence of wildlife in the area and how to minimize conflicts. Condition number 5: During construction activity within the development, the applicant, its successor, and its assigned shall conduct a burrowing owl study if any earth moving will take place between March 15 and October 31. Condition number 6: Concurrent with recordation of the final plat, a deed restriction which limits further subdivision of tracks A, B, C, and D, and platted tracks A, B, and C of Legacy Pines East filing 1 shall be recorded by separate instrument and noted on the plat Condition number 7: Prior to recordation of the final plat, technical corrections to the final plat exhibit shall be made to the satisfaction of Douglas County. And condition number 8: All commitments and promises made by the applicant or the applicant's representative during the public meeting and agreed to in writing and included in the public record have been relied upon the Board of County Commissioners in approving the application. Therefore, such approval is conditioned upon the applicant's full satisfaction of all such commitments and promises. Section 504.06 of the subdivision resolution sets forth the parameters for the board's determination on the final plat application, as noted on this slide. This concludes my presentation. Available to take any questions at this time. Otherwise, Nick Hyer with Hyer &amp; Company is here with a presentation.
Eric, thank you for that presentation. Any questions for staff?
I have none, thank you.
No, sir.
Okay. I did have just one quick question about the correspondence from Joe Welli, the Senior Wildfire Mitigation Specialist, about the wildfire mitigation plan. Can you go into any additional detail in terms of the satisfaction of that requirement?
Eric Pavlenek for staff. The applicant has completed the wildfire mitigation plan, which was approved with the Legacy Pines East filing 1. That has to get implemented prior to issuance of the first building permit, so the applicant will have to work with wildfire mitigation on completing that and implementing that plan essentially.
Okay, thanks. And then we also got the letter on June 9 of 2021 from Tri-County Health Department regarding the onsite wastewater treatment system. It sounds like that got resolved, but do you have any additional detail on that?
I do not have any additional correspondence with Tri-County. The private covenants will ensure that the septic systems are designed and installed by each lot owner in accordance with any applicable code and permit requirement. That will happen at the time of building permit application when they submit for building permits on each lot.
So is that going to satisfy the objection that we got from the Health Department and obviously, you know, of consideration now in terms of the changing of the guard there? But, you know, it says the Tri-County Health reviewed the proposal and has objection to the subdivision being served by that onsite wastewater treatment system, but you're saying that the private covenants ensure that that'll be installed according to code, so does that resolve that issue?
I'm looking at the Tri-County Health letter dated June 9, 2021. I think it's page 43 of 64. In the first paragraph, "Tri-County Health Department has reviewed the application for compliance with applicable environmental and public health regulations. Tri-County Health has reviewed the subject plan and has no objection to the subdivision being served by onsite wastewater treatment system. Must be permitted, installed, and operated in compliance with our current regulation." I don't know.
You know, I think that might have been a typo on page 24 of the packet. In the referral comment, it says, "Tri-County Health reviewed the proposal and has objection to the subdivision," but you probably meant "has no objection," right? Okay, sorry about that. You ought to get that clarity there. I was like, "Why are we objecting to this?" Okay, good. Any further questions or comments for staff? Okay, let's go ahead and bring it back to the applicant for their presentation. Good afternoon, sir. If you want to just state your name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, this is Nick Hyer. Address is 5204 South Franklin Street. And just want to say thank you for your time and considerations this afternoon. Been a while since I've seen a lot of you, so good to see you. And I apologize in advance, a lot of this is going to be a little redundant. So this is for the final plat of filing 2 of Legacy Pines East, and this consists of 11 single-family residential lots and four tracks on a total of 101 acres. Over 50% of the project is preserved as open space, which will be maintained by the homeowners' association associated with Legacy Pines East. The final plat request is, again, for the final plat of 11 of a total of 29 total lots within Legacy Pines East. The property is a loan-zoned, large rural residential, and in January and February of 2019, respectively, the Planning Commission and Board of Commissioners recommended approval for a preliminary plan for the 29 lots. And that recommendation also included the density bonus due to the plat maintaining in excess of 50% of the open space, which includes a public trail, an eight-foot public trail, no-build zones to preserve vegetation, steep slopes, and view corridors. This Legacy Pines East was developed in two separate phases. The first phase consisted of 18 single-family lots, and this final plat is for the additional 11, consisting of a total of 29. Each phase has and will maintain the 50% open space requirement, and this final plat includes public roadways, drainage, fire mitigation, open space, and other design criteria as reviewed by county staff. The final plat's roadway design ties into the completed secondary access for connectivity and fire department access through Burning Tree Ranch. Primary access to the 11 lots will be via a continuation of the recently completed Lost Lake Drive with, again, a secondary access through Burning Tree Ranch on Burning Ridge Drive. This plat will consist of two cul-de-sacs that will provide access to some of the driveways. Other driveways will be accessed directly off of Lost Lake Drive. This is showing the first filing of Legacy Pines East. You can see there's a series of three cul-de-sacs, and then the long stretch is Lost Lake Drive, which will continue on to where you see the green, where it will continue on to this filing. And then down in the bottom right-hand corner, you can see the connection, the secondary connection to Burning Tree. This is the plat in question, consisting of 11 lots. You can see that continuation of Lost Lake Drive, which will terminate in a cul-de-sac, and then an additional cul-de-sac named Mystic Doe Court. The applicant has worked with county staff on multiple iterations of the final plat to ensure planning, engineering, and other requirements have been satisfied. And as discussed previously, the project includes an eight-foot-wide crush rock trail that is available to the public. Douglas County School District has reviewed the project, and the applicant will be providing the monetary contribution to the district for each platted lot. Additionally, the applicant has worked with Franktown Fire Protection District and county staff to come up with a fire mitigation plan, as well as contribute to the enhancement of a fire cistern within Burning Tree Ranch to service the project as well as surrounding As far as utilities are concerned, the water underlying the property has been determined to be in excess of what is needed to service the lots, utilizing individual wells in the upper Dawson Aquifer. Lots will be serviced with individual septic systems, as reviewed by Tri-County Health, and not objected to.
Thank you.
Liquid service will be provided by IREA, who has provided a preliminary design and will be placed in the provided utility easement within the plat. And gas service will be provided by Black Hills Energy, who has provided the preliminary design and will be placed in the same utility easement. The applicant has responded to all public and referral agency comments and worked with staff to address those. And the applicant has provided the opportunity for neighboring community input on the project and hosted a number of meetings to listen to in attempt to address concerns. Again, the project will be governed by an HOA, and the HOA will provide ownership and maintenance of the open space tracks, the eight-foot-wide trail, and the drainage facilities. The HOA will also provide guidance to the homeowners to ensure adherence to design standards, including those required by the density bonus in the large rural residential zoning. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have, and thanks again for your time.
Thank you for that presentation, Mr. Hyer. Any questions or comments for the applicant?
I don't have questions. You've been working on this project forever, I think, and...
Well, it's my adult wife, so... I'm relatively young, though, right?
That's right. But, you know, I think this looks like it's a good project, and it'll provide homes for some people that'll be very happy to live in Douglas County, so thank you for all the work you've put on this project.
Thank you.
Commissioner Teal?
No questions for the applicant. Good presentation, as usual, Nick, but no questions at this time.
Thank you, and all of my questions have been answered. So with that, let me go ahead and open it up for any public comment on this item. Is there any public comment in the room on this item? Troy, do we have any folks online?
I have no online public comment.
Okay, so I'm going to close public comment on Item 2A and bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or emotion.
Sheriff, please, the board, I'd like to make a motion to approve Legacy Pines East filing 2, final plat with "I had eight conditions," as presented, project file SB 2021-023.
I'll second that. Did the applicant accept the conditions?
That's a good question, and let's make sure that the applicant is comfortable with all eight conditions. That's an important one. So, Mr. Hyer, if you want to approach the podium again, and let's just clarify that you have accepted all of the eight conditions as presented.
Yeah, Nick Hyer, applicant. Yes, the applicant does accept the conditions as outlined.
Okay, thank you for that. That's an important consideration, and we'll bring it back to the board.
So I did make a second, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so we have a first and second on the floor. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion passes 3 to 0. So we will now move on to our second item in land use, which is Item 2B, Arrowpoint Final Plat, project file SB 2020-032. Matthew Jacobowski presenting for staff.
Matt Jacobowski, representing Planning Services. The item before you is the Arrowpoint Final Plat, project number SB 2020-032. The applicant has several representatives here that are available for any questions you may have, and we will get to that after my presentation. The applicant is requesting final plat approval for 19 lots and 10 tracks on an 80-acre site. 50% of the site has been set aside as open space, which makes the project eligible for a three-lot density bonus per the zoning regulations in place at the time of the preliminary plan submittal. The intent of the final plat process is to provide for the review of the final engineering plans, the subdivision improvements agreement, public dedications, and other legal agreements. The final plat process begins with the submittal of an application. Following a review period by referral agencies and the public and acceptance of engineered plans, the request is considered by the board at a public meeting. During the process, staff received public comments from the Franktown Citizens Coalition and the Burning Tree HOA, which requested information on subdivision fencing and indicated that a five-acre subdivision is preferred in their minds over the density bonus option chosen by the applicant. The site outlined in blue is located approximately 1,200 feet south of the intersection of Highway 83 and Highway 86 in Franktown. This aerial shows the site currently undeveloped. Franktown Elementary School is to the south. Larger lot residences are to the south and east. Several parcels that are approximately 2 to 3 acres in size are located north of the site, and there's a vacant parcel just north of the property. As background, the site was zoned residential with the inception of zoning in the county in 1955. In 1982, the zoning classification was changed to its present rural residential, or RR, zoning. The site was part of the submitted and withdrawn Franktown Village Plan Development in 2018. The density bonus regulations that apply to this application were removed from the county's zoning resolution by board action in September of 2019. Density bonus projects in process at the time of the change were allowed to proceed under the former density bonus regulations. This particular preliminary plan was submitted in April of 2018 and approved by the board in December of 2019. The density bonus regulations were removed in September of 2019, so the density bonus regulations apply to this project. Before you is the final plat. Main access is proposed at Highway 83 via a gated entry known as Arrowpoint Drive. The applicant is actually proposing a southbound left turn lane in Highway 83 for safe movement into the site. Access to the other lots occurs from Arrowpoint Court. Lots 5, 6, and 7 are accessible from the end of this cul-de-sac via a shared driveway and access easement that will be recorded concurrently with the plat. Per the density bonus criteria, the applicant has set aside 50% of the site as open space within tracks to be owned and maintained by the Arrowpoint HOA. The open space tracks preserve floodplain, which is through the middle of the site, as well as some of the slopes on the site and vegetation. The set aside permits a three-lot density bonus. As part of this, the applicant will record a deed at the time of final plat recordation, which prohibits further subdivision of open space tracks. The applicant has also proposed some no-build areas as part of development, the main one being a buffer along the south side of the property. No structures would be allowed in that portion of the site. Drainage and utility easements are proposed within private roadways and along the edges of lots, as is typical of subdivisions in the county. Various drainage and stormwater easements are proposed throughout the subdivision. Secondary emergency access is proposed from Highway 86 via gate through track F. The county will accept general-purpose utility easements and secondary drainage easements via the final plat, as is standard on plats in the county. Following our site photos, this is a view along the Highway 83 frontage. Highway 83 is to the right. This looks from north to south. This view is from the middle of the site looking to the east. This looks north to south through the existing drainage and what is proposed as track C. This photo looks toward Highway 83 from the middle of the site, approximately through a portion of proposed track A. Before you are the approval standards applicable to a final plat. The subdivision improvements agreement and all engineering reports, studies, and plans for the final plat have been approved. The proposed density bonus also includes approval standards per section or former Section 509 of the zoning resolution. Reference to the approval standards are included within pages 10 through 13 of the staff report. And as mentioned again, the density bonus has been removed from the zoning resolution but is applicable to this application as it was submitted prior to removal of those Staff has evaluated the final plat in accordance with Article 5 of the Douglas County subdivision resolution. Should the board find that the approval standards are met, the following proposed conditions should be considered for inclusion in the motion. Condition number 1: Prior to recordation of the final plat, the applicant shall provide payment of $18,198.73 cash in lieu of school land dedication fees in accordance with Article 10 of the subdivision resolution. Condition 2: Prior to recordation of the final plat, the applicant shall provide payment of $24,164.66 cash in lieu of parkland dedication fees in accordance with Article 10 of the subdivision resolution to Douglas County. Condition 3: Concurrent with recordation of the final plat, the Arrowpoint HOA shall be established, and covenants, controls, and restrictions to address architectural design review, fencing, and landscape requirements shall be recorded by separate instrument and noted on the plat exhibit. Condition 4: Concurrent with recordation of the final plat, a deed restriction which limits further subdivision of tracks A, B, C, D, E, and J shall be recorded by separate instrument and noted on the plat exhibit. Condition 5: Concurrent with recordation of the final plat, the 40-foot shared driveway easement agreement for lots 5, 6, and 7 shall be recorded by separate instrument and noted on the plat exhibit. Condition 6: Lots 5, 9, 11, and 18 shall not be served by wells within the upper Dawson Aquifer. Condition 7: During construction activity within the development, the applicant, its successors, and its assigned shall take all reasonable care to watch for historic resources, paleontological resources, and other cultural history resources, and shall immediately notify Douglas County and complete appropriate Colorado Office of Archaeology and Historic Preservation Data Management forms in the event of such discovery. Condition number 8: During construction activity within the development, the applicant, its successors, and its assigned shall conduct a burrowing owl study if... its successors, and assigned shall conduct a burrowing AL study if any earth moving will take place between March 15th and October 31st. Condition number nine, technical corrections to record copy of the final plat exhibit shall be made to the satisfaction of Douglas County. And condition number 10, all commitments and promises made by the applicant or the applicant's representative during the public meeting and/or agreed to in writing and included in the public record have been relied upon by the Board of County Commissioners in approving the application. Therefore, such approval is conditioned upon the applicant's full satisfaction of all such commitments and promises. Section 50406 of the subdivision resolution sets forth the parameters for the board's determination on final plat requests as noted on this slide. This concludes staff's presentation. I'm available for questions regarding the staff report. Otherwise, the applicant has several representatives here, including Katie James, Alan Westfall, and Phil Geising, who are here to answer any questions you may have of them. Thank you.
Thank you for that presentation, Matt. Any questions or comments for staff?
I just have one question. On the emergency access that comes in off of Highway 86, how will that be controlled? Will there be a code, or how can people access that?
Matt Jacobowski for staff. I understand there'd be some kind of emergency code or knox box that the fire district would be able to access and open it up. The applicant may have more detailed information than that, but I understand it would have power and it would be automatic by way of someone being able to open it.
Great, I'll ask the applicant. Thank you.
Sure.
No other questions?
Thank you. Commissioner Teal?
Yeah, Matt, I wonder if you could take us back to the layout, the actual lot map? And I'm very curious. I need just a little more information pertaining to conditions 5 and 6, more specifically, So condition 6, lots number 5, 9, 11, and 18 shall not be served by wells within the upper Dawson aquifer. Can you provide a little more detail on why that is an important condition, specifically for those lots?
Right. Matt Jacobowski for staff. The condition was simplified between preliminary plan and final plat. The water was adjudicated sometime ago, 1996. That's page 108 of your staff report, which is the adjudicated water plan. And the water court determined that the various aquifers underneath the property were allotted certain acre feet. So when the state, or I guess I should say, when the water judge reviewed that, and then when the state reviewed the application during preliminary plan, it was determined that there were only certain amounts of water that could go for a well from a certain aquifer. So originally, each of the lots was dedicated either with upper or lower Dawson, but it seemed a more simplified condition if it just said that you would not be able to draw from the upper Dawson aquifer in lots 5, 9, 11, and 18. So that's related really to the adjudicated water situation, as far as why that's the case. All the lots are lined up for an individual well and not anticipated to have any issues getting any kind of well permit, but it was related to the adjudicated water.
So further well permitting for other lots could draw from the upper Dawson?
That's the case, yes.
And even with this condition, for the specified lots 5, 9, 11, and 18, they can still, they can make use, or probably obtain a well permit, I guess is the phrase we need to consider, into the lower Dawson, the Rappahoe, the Denver, basically as deep as they want to pay to drill?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you, I appreciate, because I do seem to recall, I noticed that this was a part of another application that was withdrawn. For the sake of historical anchoring for me, can you tell us a little bit more about that application that was withdrawn back in 2018?
Matt Jacobowski for staff. I was not involved with that particular application, but I understand in 2018, that application for the Franktown Village Plan Development was withdrawn. Did not reach hearings for a decision to be made. The applicant withdrew that application. The applicant here today, who I believe was involved in that process, would perhaps be able to shed more light than I can, but it was related to the larger-scale Franktown Village Plan Development. And when that was withdrawn, the applicant proposed this current application under the zoning that was in place.
Okay. Yeah, that was kind of before my time here, but I do seem to recall an issue one time, Commissioner Thomas, that came up with one of our boards and commissions we were on at a regional level, and you, there was an issue, and you had to recuse yourself. Is that this piece of land, but that prior application?
I don't know that that is the same one, but in 2018, Mr. Ingles, if I'm correct, that this particular application had gone through the Planning Commission, had passed. We had spent one meeting with the Board of Commissioners. It was Commissioner Weaver and Commissioner Partridge and me. We went through one whole, long session. It was continued to the next night, and the next night, the applicant withdrew it.
Okay.
That's consistent with my memory, yes.
Thank you just for the historical grounding. I appreciate it. Of course, we do know applications in Colorado are discreet in nature. I'm just a history buff, so everyone, thank you for letting me ask that question. That concludes my questions, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Teal. Any additional questions or comments for staff?
I have none.
You know, I have a couple of questions about the correspondence we received from the neighborhood communities, the Burning Tree Ranch HOA, and the Franktown Citizen Coalition, as well as a question about the REG 72 issue raised by the Cherry Creek Basin Water Quality Authority. But I will reserve those following the applicant's presentation. So let's go ahead and have the applicant come up and present on this item. And sir, if you just want to state your name and address for the record, welcome.
Thank you, Alan Westfall, 1976 Canyon Street, Castle Rock, Colorado. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. We're here mostly to answer questions addressing the historical nature of the property. Part of the Franktown Metro District development that attempted to start over quite a number of years, we were trying to develop this particular parcel for higher density. We were approved at the Planning Commission, but there was a tremendous outpouring of neighborhood comment and opposition to it, so we felt, since we live here, that that was in our best interest to go ahead and back, withdraw that application, and then apply into the density bonus as we have now. The site plan that you saw a few minutes ago was designed to basically take the first 40 acres approximately on Highway 83, keep that as open space, move the homes up to the far end of the property, and that's how we came to develop the property. So we're here to answer any questions that you have, engineering and our counsel.
Any questions for the applicant? Thank you for that.
Mr. Westfall, could you explain to me who has access to that emergency egress and how that will work?
It is purely emergency egress or exit from the property. It is gated. There will be a knox box on it for the fire department. It's really not designed for anything other than emergency. If there is an emergency, there is an automatic opener on the gate to go out, but that's it.
Thank you.
Further questions?
Now, the applicant kind of addressed my prior question to staff that had some details that I was still looking for, so I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Well, and I just might have a couple of questions, Mr. Westfall.
Yes.
First, a comment of gratitude. Thank you for the engagement with the citizens. We certainly respect and appreciate the fact that you live here and honor the values that are important and memorialized in the comprehensive master plan. I'm always somewhat sensitive to Franktown as being one of our designated rural communities in Douglas County. With regard to some of the correspondence that we received from the neighborhood groups, certainly the Burning Tree Ranch HOA had a couple of comments associated with this application, and it sounded like they got resolved specifically regarding the fencing. But are you able to speak to that a little bit about, in terms of how that was rectified with them?
Which fencing is it addressing?
So this is the issue that they raised in their October 15, 2020 correspondence to you, and it was just an objection to a fence, a non-natural boundary surrounding this development for multiple reasons. They cited disruption of wildlife trails closing off a developed area instead of an open natural area.
Yeah. I believe there was an impression at one point that we would fence the property with other than what is currently there. It's been agriculture for the last 100 years. It is fenced now with, still has livestock on it, which will end very soon, but other than that, which has not inhibited wildlife movement at all. So I think that's, we're not changing anything there.
Well, I think that's helpful. It's always, you know, before things get here, for citizens to have some engagement with a developer and work things out. Prior to us hearing about it, makes our job a lot easier, so I appreciate that. I think the Franktown Citizens Coalition correspondence from the 28th mirrors those same issues on a couple of levels. Seems like their largest concern is with the five-acre per residence and the clustering issue, but it also appears like you reached a good compromise in terms of that. I guess my question might be for Matt in terms of precedential value of approving this application with a three-acre per residence. Does that create any precedence for us for future applications associated with lot size?
Matt Jacobowski for staff. I don't anticipate precedent because this is related to the density bonus standards, and I guess as it is generally, the range of densities in the rural residential would in certain cases allow lots that could be smaller than five acres. It's not as much a minimum lot size as it's a density range over a site, so I don't think it would really change anything, because this is particular to the density bonus and also the range of density that's allowed in the zoning as it is right now for any applicant anywhere.
Yeah, and we remove that density bonus, and so, you know, certainly, I understand that going forward, but oftentimes in our approval criteria, one of the items is associated with physical characteristics of adjacent properties. And so if future applicants have this as an adjacency with a three-acre site, I'm wondering if that would factor into future considerations.
Jeanette Bear for staff. You know, I think each and every application is unique, and we look at surrounding properties. In this case, you know, we didn't really receive objections from any of the surrounding properties, and we did create some no-build zones and buffers to protect some of the native vegetation. So I think that, you know, the design really kind of stands on its own, so I don't think we're setting a precedent. We try to listen to neighbors and look at adjacency with each and every project and try to get it something that's compatible.
Okay, thank you, Jeanette. Any additional questions or comments for the applicant or staff? Okay. Thank you very much. Seeing none, I'm going to open this item up for any public comment. Is there any public comment in the room on this item? Seeing none. Troy, do we have any online?
I have no online comment.
Okay, and with that, I will close public comment. And before I bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or a motion, let me just ask the applicant if you are in favor, and do you accept the eight conditions as presented?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. And with that, I'll bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or a motion.
Mr. Chai, I have a motion to approve Arrowpoint Final Plat with 10 conditions as presented, project file SB-2020-032.
Second in wish to speak in favor of the motion.
There's a first and second. Commissioner Teal?
So, I mean, when we talk about development here in the county, it's extremely important for me that we think in terms of being neighborly. And, you know, whether we're, when you have a development, you're talking about adding new neighbors to the county. But at the same token, that development must be done in a neighborly manner. Now, I fully realize there's business decisions behind every development. They are inherently a business project and a business program. But, I mean, I would like to tip my hat to the applicant. Thank you for reminding me of the history of this site. Again, I was on the Cass Rock Council and only heard peripheral, very peripheral information, but I do know that, well, it's very obvious, you guys made changes based upon public input from the people surrounding the area. So very much, I very much appreciate that. That's the model of development that I always would like to see moving forward, where, yes, it's a new development, yes, it's inherently a business deal, but you're introducing new neighbors to our wonderful community. And so during that process, I do expect developers to be neighborly. And obviously, you guys had to go back to the drawing board, do a lot of hard work on this. Thank you for doing that. Thank you for coming up with accommodations that I hope are achieving your goals while at the same time building a new neighborhood in our community that fits and will be good neighbors in the future for us all.
So I'll comment also in what Commissioner Teal just said. I had spent, I think, three days reading that packet in 2018 because there was so much information. And it was intriguing because what you had done is taken water and committed it from one parcel into the southeast part of 83 and 86 so that you could have centralized water. And if I recall, you had an agreement to take the water up to the pinery so that you would be reusing wastewater, which was very intriguing, and we know that as we go forward, we must have renewable water sources. So that was a packet that I spent a lot of time reading, a lot of time taking notes. I knew that the Planning Commission had approved it. I think it was 70. And then when we had the first day of hearings, this room was full, and then the next day, you pulled it. And I understood what you, why you pulled it. I would hope in the future that we can find ways in community to benefit from that wastewater, because that's what we're going to have to do going into the future to maintain our water supplies. I think you've done a really nice job redoing this parcel, and I am in support of it. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Staff, can you just bring up the legal approval criteria? And while you do that, let me just confirm, I think we got approval from the applicant on eight conditions, but there are 10 conditions. Mr. Westfall, are you accepting all 10 conditions?
No.
Okay, I know you're not at the podium, but let the record reflect that the applicant has accepted all 10 conditions as presented by staff. So in reviewing, just as a final time, these legal approval standards, I am also in support of this application, and again, want to thank the applicant for the engagement with the community and the long process to get to this point today, so thank you for that. If there are no further comments or questions, I'll bring it back to the board for, I guess we do have a first, did we have a first and second and just some discussion? So I'll close discussion. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion passes three to zero. And with that, we'll move to our final item on today's public hearing agenda item, which is item 3A, a resolution adopting an amendment to the county commissioner district boundaries map pursuant to CRS 30-10-306. Lance Ingles from the attorney's office. Mr. Ingles?
Yes, Mr. Chair. This item is being brought forward from a public hearing on August 24. At that public hearing, there was one map presented to the county commissioners that would realign county commissioner districts in Douglas County. That is what's labeled in your packet as option one. Based on public comments, not necessarily received on August 24, but received after August 24, a second map has been added for your consideration for purposes of just folks that might be listening but not seeing anything that's online. That map would change the boundaries primarily of District 3, instead of pushing to the south.
to the south into and including Roxboro and Sterling Ranch, it would push more easterly and include Castle Pines and that area. Both maps are compliant with the statutory criteria. The criteria is that the districts be roughly equal in size and that not more than 5% difference in population between the largest district and the smallest district. Both of these maps meet the criteria, and it's really a question for the board if one or the other of these maps meet your needs for redistricting.
Thank you, Mr. Ingles. Any questions or comments for Mr. Ingles?
I don't have any for Mr. Ingles.
No, sir.
You know, Lance, can you, it sounds like from what you just shared with us, all of the statutory criteria have been met for the two alternatives for the commissioner district maps. Are there any additional considerations that we should be thinking about today beyond the statutory ones?
There are additional considerations in some counties, and the reason for that is the possibility of gerrymandering in counties that have five commissioners and district-only elections and that sort of thing. But when all three districts are elected at large, those considerations really go away. Everybody gets to vote on every county commissioner. So some of those things that you worry about and certainly that gain interest politically and in news circles are not applicable here. Here, it's more of a population question. I know there's been discussion amongst the board as can we anticipate growth a little bit so that we might not have to do this again sooner than necessary? And that's been just part of the discussion. But as far as other legal considerations, nope. As long as they are roughly equal in size and no more than 5% difference from smallest to largest, you pretty much have unlimited discretion where to draw these lines.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ingles. Any further questions or comments of staff? Okay. Seeing none, I will open it up for any public comment on this item 3A. Is there any public comment in the room on item 3A? Troy, do we have anybody online?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no online comment.
Okay. Thank you. And with that, I will close public comment and bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or motion.
So if I could, I would like to talk about the process and the journey and the history of how we got here. So it's my understanding, and correct me, Mr. Ingles, is if I, when I speak, if I say anything incorrectly, but that commissioners are able to redraw boundary lines in odd years. We tried to do this in 2017. We'd gone through the process for the public comment. As we were walking onto the dais, commissioners Weaver and Partridge notified as they were pulling this item from the agenda. So I don't know when the last time the boundaries were done, but it was prior to 2017. We weren't able to do it in 2019 because of the census that took place in 2020, and that was by statute. So our districts right now are not in balance. The law is okay with them being out of balance now, but next year they must be within balance of 5% of the biggest to the smallest. Is that correct?
That is correct because it is following a census. Next year is an even numbered year. Normally, you wouldn't make the change in an even numbered year. But again, because of its proximity to the census, you could make it no later than next year.
Okay. So we had, we had agreed and did a public, the meeting we had on August 24th was on map number one. And I have not received any public comment from people asking to change. Commissioner Teal says that he has. There was nobody here in the room or online to provide any input. I would like to suggest and ask that we stay with map number one, and let me explain why. We have been discussing this for a long time, and Commissioner Layden wasn't even interested in doing this right now because he wanted to wait, and if I mischaracterize this, until the census data was complete because we don't have to do it this year, that we could, we could wait. We elect commissioners at large, so everybody gets to vote for all three commissioners, no matter where they live. Because these districts were not realigned in 2017, I felt it was important that they be aligned as soon as possible so they would be closer in size. There's no political reason for any of us that I'm aware of to change any of these lines because we all clearly live within our districts. My concern is based on future boards so that, and change is hard for the public. If we can establish something that works into the future, I think that is a better decision. And that's why I support map number one. We know that Commissioner Layden's district, District One, is going to grow because of Ridge Gate in your district. There's also a lot of ground around Parker and even in Aurora in the county that are going to continue to grow. Commissioner Teal, you come from Castle Rock where I think the population now is 75,000 and the goal is 125,000?
The Castle Rock Master Plan, unless there's been a revision since I've been here on the board in the last essentially 10 months since I left the Castle Rock Council, the Castle Rock Master Plan is 100,000 in 2030, ma'am.
Okay. I read someplace 125,000, but that might have been a different year when I was doing the research. But there's also other growth around Castle Rock in your district that is not in Castle Rock. So let's talk about Sterling Ranch. Sterling Ranch was platted for 12,040 homes, a population of 39,000. Highlands Ranch is completely built out. There's no more growth that's going to happen within the boundaries of the Highlands Ranch planned development. That leads us to Castle Pines. So I've been doing research and trying to figure out where the growth is going to happen in Castle Pines. And from what I've found, it's going to happen in the canyons, and that's 3,000 to 4,000 homes. My concern is that if we can, if we join Highlands Ranch with Castle Pines, District 3 is not going to have the potential for growth that District 2 is with Castle Rock and Castle Pines and Abe's District with Lone Tree, Aurora, and Parker, which will put another board in the future having to redraw these lines again. Could that mean that District 3 needs to cannibalize Lone Tree? Does it go south and cannibalize Castle Rock? Or is it better for us to decide today to keep Sterling Ranch and Highlands Ranch together as District 3, Castle Pines and Castle Rock as District 2, and Lone Tree and Parker as District 1? Let me just say that the one other comment I heard from you, Commissioner Teal, is that the people in Castle Pines felt that they would be better represented because they were more in common with Highlands Ranch because of Monarch Boulevard. But this is not a congressional district where we are trying to combine communities of interest because in that case, only the residents in that congressional district get to vote for their leader. And that's why it's important for them to combine communities of interest. In Douglas County, we all vote for all the commissioners. So the importance of communities of interest does not, is not as applicable, is not applicable here as it is in the congressional districts. So this is why I'm asking that we include my district, District 3, with Sterling Ranch going into the future and not Castle Pines.
Thank you, Commissioner Teal.
Oh, actually, that was really great job, Commissioner Thomas. You know, listen, I did, I did receive some comments from residents of Castle Pines that did draw that relationship that we have down Monarch Boulevard, you know, and build that community of interest logic, which, I mean, that is something that we've been talking about a great deal when we do talk about participating at the state level in the congressional and the state legislative boundaries. I have to, I felt that we, you know, the, the applicable statute that we're following here, you know, did have that requirement for us to post a map with the purpose of soliciting comments. We solicited comments. You know, your, your comment though, Commissioner Thomas, pertaining to the fact that these are at-large, you know, voting districts, is very salient. And so really, yeah, I mean, I agree. The primary thing that we must do is actually look to a balance of population within the three districts. Once I did receive comments from Castle Pines pertaining to wanting to draw that like, you know, the like community between Castle Pines and Highlands Ranch that really was just based upon that transportation route of Monarch Boulevard. I felt like that was salient enough to actually offer up and make sure that, listen, going into this meeting, the people knew that we weren't taking this lightly, that we were providing good analysis to this, and that quite frankly, when we convened this meeting, we wouldn't have something that looked like a rubber stamp where we started with one map and we finished with one map, that there would be options. I, for one, really appreciate, Commissioner Thomas, you taking the time to articulate a very salient argument in favor of, I think what we should refer to as map number one, option number one, that does have District 3 concentrated in the northwest corner of the county with a population estimate of 117,000 as compared to 120,000 for District 1 and District 2. So, I mean, quite frankly, I think we've, I don't have a great deal to disagree with you, Commissioner. I really appreciate the fact that you went and you articulated such a strong argument in favor of what I believe we were all recognized as the superior map so that we could get Douglas County on a footing going into the future. About the only thing that I would introduce for consideration is something that I did, occurred to me. I did not receive public comment on this subject. But in District 1 and District 2, there are incorporated municipalities within those two districts, whether you're talking Parker and Lone Tree, Aurora, the fragment of Aurora that comes down in. District 2, obviously, Castle Rock is, provides a big feature there. And then, of course, you have Larkspur, that is an incorporated municipality. And so the only other variable I would throw in that distinguishes the two maps, being districts of origin for running for county commissioner into the future, is that under option number one, District 3 is without any incorporated municipalities. And I just want to introduce that as a feature of that map in that there will be no, no opportunity for a candidate for District 3 to be, you know, to come from a municipal council. Whereas District 2 and District 1 will always have that introduced. When we figure further for future development, I think we accepted a statement from a staff briefing in the springtime that moving into the future, our development really in the county is unlikely to be these large developments in unincorporated Douglas County. The Sterling Ranches, the Highlands Ranches, they are more likely to come from developments within the municipalities or adjacent to the municipalities. And so that would be a variable that I would also say would distinguish the two maps, is that opportunity for, by incorporating Castle Pines into District 3, you have that opportunity to introduce future candidates for District 3 possibly being sourced from residency in Castle Pines, a incorporated municipality, or the Castle Pines City Council. How compelling is that of an argument? I don't know. I mean, I think it's, it stood out to me after other comments had come in. So I would offer it up for consideration. While at the same token, Commissioner, I thought you made a fantastic, fantastic pitch for option number one. So well done. And besides, at the very least, we do not have a room full of people for everybody who may be monitoring online. We don't have a room full of people here. There was nobody for public comment online when it was offered up. It's, this is probably not the hottest topic on everyone's mind today. So I guess based upon the very good argument put forward by Commissioner Thomas, I too am inclined to get behind option number one. And I think it, we have fulfilled our statutory obligations under redistricting. We've opened it for public comment. We've held our two hearings. We have obviously done a great deal of work. Commissioner Thomas, you did a great job articulating the work and the reasoning that we have put into the formulation of this map. Chair, I think that concludes my comments.
Thank you, Board, for those comments. I was expecting to hear two sides of two different maps, but it sounds like we do have some consensus around map number one. I will say that I received very little public comment on this or input. I sort of received one in favor of map one and then one in favor of map two. I think it's accurate to say that I was not interested in looking at this at all until the information from the census was complete. And I think there's still much to be learned in terms of population numbers for commissioner districts. I think it's also fair to say that there's likely little public interest in any of this because of the at-large manner in which commissioners are elected. It is important that each district has a representative population, so I'm glad that we're moving forward in that direction. I did think it was interesting that, at least in District 3, there are no incorporated municipalities. And District 1 and District 2 have those incorporated municipalities. So, you know, I can't predict the future of Sterling Ranch or Highlands Ranch, but I do think that there is some value in having incorporated municipalities within your districts. But that said, if the board continues to be in favor of map number one, I believe we've certainly engaged in a fairly robust and open public process. So I will also lend my support to map number one.
I appreciate that. Thank you. And I will just add that Highlands Ranch does have a metro district that has elections. So if you feel that's important, there could be the option for someone to come from the Highlands Ranch metro district to then run for county commissioner.
Is there any further discussion, Commissioner Teal?
So just a question then that I'd like to put to the county attorney. It's not inherent in terms of the motion, Mr. Ingles, that we do have prepared on this one in terms of which map. But it's pretty obvious that we have consensus for map number one, which just to, I mean, just for the record to articulate, gives us a model, population model for District 1 of approximately 120,000, District 2 approximately 120,000, and then in District 3, a population of 117,000. Beyond that articulation of the differences in the maps, is there any need to note that when making the motion?
No, I was about to suggest you add that clarity with that when you make the motion to approve the resolution, you're talking about option one map, and then staff will assemble it for your final signature.
Well, without further ado, of course, if there's additional discussion, Mr. Chair, I'm happy to entertain it, happy to participate in it. But if it pleases the board, I'd like to make a motion to approve map option number one, as a resolution adopting an amendment to the county commissioner district boundaries map pursuant to CRS 30-10-306.
Second?
There's a first and second. Is there any further discussion on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion passes. Thank you very much, and we are now adjourned.
Thank you.